Well, good evening. I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Newport News School Board for November 16th, 2021. On behalf of the members of the School Board and Superintendent, I welcome each of you present and watching. A quorum is present to transact the business of the School Division. The COVID-19 pandemic and now the Delta variant continues to affect how we conduct business. Personal barriers are installed between members of the Board, and our staff and visitors are masked and socially distanced throughout the auditorium and in our overflow areas. We are taking these steps to ensure the health and well-being of our staff and the public. We value and appreciate your partnership. We will begin tonight's meeting with the invocation and pledge of the flag. Here to do the honors are two students from Sanford Elementary School, Brielle Jackson and Jesus Vargas. First, Brielle will come forward and deliver the invocation. She'll be followed by Jesus, who will come forward and deliver the pledge. Brielle Jackson, would you please come forward and tell us a little bit about yourself before you get started and deliver our invocation?
Good evening Chairman Brown, Dr. Parker, and School Board members. My name is Brielle Jackson, and I am a 5th grade text student at Sanford Elementary School. This evening, I would like to share a poem that I wrote to highlight our focus on kindness at Sanford. The title of my poem is "Will You Be Kind?" Will you be kind? Will you be kind? It doesn't take much time. You don't know how many new friends you could find. Go write your mom a nice letter, or maybe get her a sweater. You never know the weather. Either/or, they're both fine. I just have to ask for one last time, will you be kind? Thank you.
Thank you, Brielle. Jesus Vargas, will you now please come forward and tell us a little bit about yourself and then lead us in the pledge?
Good evening Chairman Brown, Dr. Parker, and School Board members. My name is Jesus Vargas. I am in 5th grade at Sanford Elementary School. My favorite subject is science. I enjoy playing outside with my friends. My favorite food is pizza, and my hobby is drawing. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for your time.
Let's give them another round of applause. Two wonderful students from Sanford Elementary. Thank you, Mr. Vargas, and thank you, Ms. Jackson. You did an excellent job. Supporting Brielle and Jesus tonight are their family members and school family. We ask you now to please stand so that you can be acknowledged. Thank you for bringing up such wonderful students. All right. The Board appreciates the encouragement you've given these students, and we thank you for coming to tonight's meeting. Now, next on tonight's agenda is School Board recognitions, and Dr. Parker, I believe we have a few.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We'll start with the Purple Star designation.
Good evening. I have the honor of presenting this month's recognitions. The Purple Star Designation is awarded to schools that demonstrate military-friendly practices and a commitment to military students and families. Virginia is home to a large population of active-duty, guard, reserve, and veteran armed services members, and our public schools educate thousands of military-connected students. This evening, we're proud to announce that General Stanford Elementary School earned designation as a Purple Star School. Joining us this evening to accept this recognition on behalf of the General Stanford School community is the leadership team at General Stanford and our military liaison. Please join us in welcoming Principal Elizabeth Galbraith. Ms. Galbraith? Assistant Principal Raymond Dutton. School Counselor Lochevel Brown. And Christine Stiefel, our School Liaison Specialist for Joint Base Langley-Eustis. This team has received a resolution of recognition, which I think our principal is holding, which reads in part, "The Virginia Council on the Interstate Compact for the Educational Opportunity of Military Children: Resolution of Recognition to Commemorate Designation as a Purple Star School, General Stanford Elementary School." Whereas, General Stanford Elementary School has been selected as a Purple Star School by this council, and whereas, the Purple Star Designation is an award of distinction bestowed for a period of three years, and whereas, General Stanford Elementary School was selected for excellence in establishing a school culture dedicated to meeting the transitional needs of military-connected students, and whereas, the support of military-connected students improves the well-being of military families and supports mission readiness, and whereas, General Stanford Elementary School has demonstrated its commitment to support of military-connected students through ongoing professional development, peer transition support, and community engagement. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Virginia Council on the Interstate Compact for the Educational Opportunity of Military Children hereby commends Principal Elizabeth Galbraith, the faculty, staff, students, and parents of General Stanford Elementary School for achieving Purple Star Designation. It was adopted in Richmond and signed on the 12th day of November. Please join me in a round of congratulations. The resolution is signed by all the members of the council, including the Virginia Secretary of Veterans and Defense Affairs. So please, share this congratulations with your entire school community. Again, congratulations. In closing, want to acknowledge that this week marks the annual observance of American Education Week, when school districts across the country celebrate and showcase public education. Newport News Public Schools is commemorating American Education Week by showcasing teaching and learning. Every day this week, schools are posting promotional messages and using social media to publicize how students are becoming college, career, and citizen-ready. We encourage you to follow our schools and see firsthand how our students are preparing for successful futures. At this time, we'll take about a six-minute break so that our honorees and our student guests may leave if they choose to do so. During this time, our viewing audience will have an opportunity to look at this month's School Board Spotlight. So we'll stand in recess for about six minutes. Thank you.
Middle School Sports in Newport News Public Schools is officially back. After sports at the middle school level were put on hiatus last school year because of COVID restrictions, student athletes are on the move, with the fall season of middle school track wrapping up in late October at Todd Stadium. Students, coaches, and families were thrilled to be back outside competing and cheering their athletes on to victory at the All-City Middle School Championship Meet. In the girls' meet, Washington ran away with the championship title, followed by Gildersleeve and Fitzgerald Middle Schools. This is the sixth championship in the past seven seasons for the Washington Bay Savers. The ladies from Washington had top finishes in almost every category, including sprints, longer runs, and relay events. For the boys' All-City Meet, Fitzgerald and Washington tied for the middle school championship, with Hines and Gildersleeve rounding out the top-team rankings. This is Fitzgerald's second boys' title in 12 seasons of middle school track, and the third championship for Washington. In many of the events, Fitzgerald and Washington both finished in top-scoring positions, helping to lead their teams to victory. For 6th graders, just starting to run competitively, there were unscored events to help these younger athletes gain experience and confidence. Track stars from Heritage and Warwick High Schools volunteer their time to help the meet run smoothly. Welcome back, Middle School Sports, and congratulations to all the runners that competed in this year's All-City Championship.
A few weeks before Heritage High School students returned to in-person learning following the heartbreaking event in September, student athletes were back in uniform to complete their fall season. For most of Heritage's student athletes and their coaches, returning to play was a step towards normalcy, drawing on the power of sports and competition to heal together as a team and as a school. For weeks following the tragic event, student athletes in football, cheerleading, golf, marching band, field hockey, cross-country, and volleyball were confined to virtual learning and not able to practice at school. Many coaches stayed in touch with their players during this time, reaching out to their student athletes to make sure they were emotionally cared for and socially connected. A little more than a week before in-person learning commenced, teams were allowed back at practice to pick up where they left off weeks earlier. This was a great stride forward for the athletes, coaches, and the entire 5,800 family. During Heritage's first football game, the school focused on celebration by hosting Senior Night for all of the students participating in fall sports. While shaking off the rust following many weeks off, teams were still focused on competing at a high level and representing their school with excellence. The girls' and boys' volleyball teams enjoyed postseason berths, with the girls playing in the regional tournament and the boys' team advancing to the state tournament. The structure of a practice schedule while training alongside caring teammates with common experiences, and the adrenaline of physical competition helped student athletes at Heritage to heal and move forward together. In the summer, physical education in Newport News Public Schools moves to the great outdoors to give students exposure to a number of fun fitness activities. During two, three-week summer sessions, high school students are able to work towards completing their health and physical education requirements by gaining a half-credit in either Outdoor Education 1 or 2. Taking place primarily at Newport News Park, Outdoor Education 1 introduces students to various outdoor skills while enhancing their mental and physical well-being. Through biking, water activities, archery, and other outdoor experiences, students learn teamwork, skill development, safety practices, and responsibility. In Outdoor Education 2, students build upon their foundational skills with a more intense curriculum that also includes an overnight camping trip and longer biking and canoe trips. This past summer, over 100 high school students participated in both outdoor education sessions. Some students even had the opportunity to work with the James River Association on the banks of Fort Monroe, expanding their outdoor skills through kayaking, wildlife investigation, and water quality assessments. And for the first time, middle school students involved in the Summer Spark Program were invited to partake in some introductory outdoor education activities, catching a glimpse of opportunities available to them when they get to high school. By offering students unique learning experiences through outdoor education, Newport News Public Schools is encouraging students to explore new skills and activities that will last a lifetime. For Hilton Elementary, their annual Hilton Hustle 5K and One Mile Fun Run is about far more than just running. It's about bringing together families, local businesses, and the Hilton neighborhood for a fun and meaningful event that ultimately supports the hard-working students and dedicated teachers who thrive in this community. After a virtual option last year, the 8th Annual Hilton Hustle was together again and enjoyed their largest turnout ever with over 330 participants across both races. This was a huge testimony to the devotion of Race Director Amy Clickenbeard and Hilton's PTA to hustle in person and make it better than ever. The Saturday morning event kicked off with CNU's basketball team leading young runners through a series of stretches to get them ready for their one-mile sprint through historic Hilton Village. Since the race takes place right before Halloween, runners are encouraged to dress up with a chance to win great prizes for their creative costumes. During the 5K race, runners enjoyed the picturesque course along the James River and through Hilton in the fall. Family and friends cheered on every runner, including Hilton Principal Troy Latouche and many staff members. Through the support of local restaurants and business sponsors, top runners and costume winners received amazing gifts after the race. This year, the Hilton Hustle raised $10,000, which will support classroom instruction and unique academic opportunities for the students at Hilton Elementary.
Well, welcome back. We hope that you enjoyed this month's School Board Spotlight. During our regular meetings, we offer two opportunities for the public to address the School Board, an Item 2 and also an Item 6. These opportunities are scheduled in the early part of our agenda and also towards the end of the meeting. So we do have a considerable number of cards, so if your card is not called in this section, please do not despair. There is Item 6 where there will be another opportunity to speak before the Board. As advertised, citizens may submit comments via web form, email, or voicemail, up to 30 minutes prior to our meeting to be included in the official meeting record. The School Board recognizes that during the pandemic, some members of the public may not be able to join us in person. For those of you who are joining us in person, the Board considers this an opportunity to listen to your comments. Please understand that we will consider your concerns, but we will not respond to you at this time. We ask that you comply with our three-minute time limit when you come up. As you begin, there is a green light that will come on at the end of the dais, a yellow light signals that you have 30 seconds remaining, and a red light indicates that your time is up. And as I call your card, please come forward. First card I have is Ms. Janine Basemore.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, School Board members, and Dr. Parker, I come before you once again to ask you to reject the mayor's plan that relocates Huntington Middle School to 28th Street. I remind you that the mayor and city council had no problem immediately rejecting the plan and design for Huntington that you presented to them in 2019. Our community was failed when Huntington was closed, and we ask you not to fail us this time. I remind you, Chairman Brown, Mr. Harris, Mr. Ely, and Mr. Hunter, that you put your signature to a document in which it was stated that you agreed 100% with rebuilding Huntington in its current location. This is your word. Hope this is your bond. We hope that your signature is your bond. We ask that you not risk your trust and your integrity. We ask that you keep your word and vote against the plan that moves Huntington Middle School. The city has continuously required the School Board and the School Division to agree to their plan in order to get funding for Huntington. Once again, I say it's illegal. Someone needs to take action on your behalf. The city cannot strong-arm you into accepting the plan by withholding funds until you do. The city wants you to voluntarily turn over property so they don't have to go through the procedures of taking property. That's the same way that they are not following procedures with our community. We're being ignored. I have a copy of petition here that we had already submitted to the mayor. This petition contains over 300 signatures of interested persons, Huntington Middle School, Huntington High School alumni persons, who say Huntington should remain in its current location. I want to leave this with you tonight. The city has not followed the procedures on the project, and we ask you not to give it legitimacy. We ask that you reject the plan. Huntington shall rise again at 3401 Orchid Avenue, and I thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Basemore. Would you please give your petitions to the clerk?
Sure.
Next speaker is Ms. Pam Hall.
Good evening. My name is Pam Hall, and I live in the Southeast Community. The people of the Southeast Community definitely support the need for a new Huntington Middle School, but we do not support the school being moved from 3401 Orchid Avenue. We therefore ask you to reject the proposal and the quid pro quo tactics. This is supposed to be a democracy, and the people that elected you should decide how their tax dollars are spent. If the city is willing to pay for renovations of any of the building, it should be done for the children and included in the school budget for Huntington Middle School as it was in the beginning. You have copies of Booker T.'s website showing that their school was renovated, it was older than Huntington is now, and the man who was in charge of the project or had something to do with it said that the building will stand another 70 years. So I ask you to reject the proposal, and let's move forward with getting the school at 3401 Orchid Avenue, Newport News. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cindy Connell?
Good evening. My name is Cindy Connell. I'm an 8th grade teacher with Newport News Public Schools and an adjunct in the Teacher Prep Program at CNU. I also have two children who attend school in the division. First of all, I'd like to thank the Board for passing the calendar adjustments last week. When I saw Mr. Hunter's comments and heard the exasperation in his voice as he talked about the stress that we are all under, I felt it might be important for the Board to hear more on that topic. I've been a teacher for close to 20 years. I've taught in New Orleans Public Schools, I've taught in Mexico City, and lots of places in between. Never in those 20 years have I felt as stressed and as unsafe as I feel this school year. I think we, as a nation, underestimated the emotional strain the pandemic took on many students and their families. Throwing everyone back into a five-day-a-week rigorous schedule with "the kids are all behind and we have to catch them up" commentary constantly looming over our heads has taken its toll. I have seen fights increasing, hallways in my building becoming increasingly unsafe, and staff expressing concern over their personal safety. The worst fight I have ever witnessed in my life occurred this month on my hallway. Our security team handled the situation wonderfully, and we are beyond grateful that they were there. Even with their presence, a staff member was assaulted, taken away by ambulance, and missed a week of work. First of all, I would love for the Board to review the case of Officer Robin Paget, who has been at my school for over 20 years. We are horrified by her removal from our building as a result of this incident. Secondly, please understand I am not here to point fingers or place blame. We are all in this together. What I am seeing on a day-to-day basis is, in my humble opinion, an escalating crisis for both students and staff. Something needs to be done. We all know teacher retention is an issue and will continue to be a problem unless immediate measures are taken. On top of all of that, bus drivers are making multiple runs per day, we cannot keep subs in our building, and instructional staff are being offered $3.50 an hour to cover classes. I could go on. I am not here to place blame, only to suggest that together, we must recognize these problems and begin to take immediate steps to solve them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. James Lovett Jr.?
Good afternoon, members of the School Board, Chairman, Superintendent Parker, and audience. My name is James Lovett Jr., and I'm a resident of Newport News. I've been here a very long time. I attended Huntington High School back in the 60s, and I hope you all would vote against the city council moving the school. The school is a legacy. You know, the school needs to be torn down, but it needs to be rebuilt on 3401 Orchid Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lovett. Lisa Schneider?
Good evening, everybody. I'm here to speak for our security guard, Officer Robin Paget. I'm following up with Ms. Collins, what she said, Ms. Connell's remarks earlier, and I would like to read Mrs. Paget's statement. Mrs. Paget has been with our school for 26 years, and we are just a wreck right now about what is happening to her. We feel like she is being scapegoated for what is happening in the schools, and we would like some help from you guys to protect her, because she is our protector, and she has been protecting us for the last 26 years and our students. So I'm going to read this statement from her. "I have had many of my work colleagues tell me that we are all disposable, that we are all just a number and not a name, that as soon as we are gone, we're forgotten and replaced. I have argued those statements with many, sharing with them that that is not, that is an untruth. Sadly, I feel I can no longer argue this with them. I feel disposable and disposed of. When I think back on the past 31 years, I have so many fond memories with Newport News Public Schools. My memories range from both my children, who are 36 and 41 years old, now having excellent experiences at Gildersleeve Middle School, to lifelong coworker friends, as well as cherished life lessons I have gained through the kindness, patience, understanding, and forgiveness from others. I was fortunate enough to transfer to GMS about 26 years ago. I have gained the status of a staple there. She is our family. I know every inch of my building. I know my generations of families that continue to be educated here. I know the basic needs and often more as to what our staff, faculty, and students need on a daily basis. I've worked on the yearbook staff, been part of the school improvement team, after-school activities, taken charter bus trips out of town with our students and staff, worked with our Wheelie program, as well as hundreds of sporting events. Yes, Gildersleeve Middle School is and has been my happy home away from home for 26 years. The thought of pulling me away from here and the students I know so well to send me to an unknown, especially during these extremely difficult times we are all going through, just doesn't make any sense to me and will make an already chaotic situation worse. And lastly, it was very difficult to round the corner of my hall to see a principal on the floor unconscious with a fire extinguisher next to him, teachers and students screaming for help, another principal in a state of panic hearing calls on the radios to call the police, call an ambulance, and then an officer on the floor, at this point for quite some time, struggling and afraid to give up control because the situation was so volatile. The student's voice was echoing all through the halls, which prompted us to go into a lockdown. The students' exclamations were such as, "As soon as I'm free, I'm going to kill all of you. I'm going to shoot you in the face when you let me go," and much more of the same. How were we to really know that this student wasn't armed? The other officer was tiring quickly by this time. He screamed to me, "I need handcuffs now." I ask you, just take a moment to think, what would you have done? I will rest with this statement. In nearly 31 years of service to Newport News Public Schools as a security officer, I have never used my handcuffs. I have never pulled them out to use them. I have never done an assisted escort report. I have always been able to use my verbal de-escalation skills or call for backup when I was no longer making positive progress in a situation. Obviously, relationship-building, communication, and trust are key. Thank you."
Thank you, Ms. Schneider.
Please consider.
Mary Voss?
Hello, Mary Voss, NNPS teacher, parent, and graduate. I'm also a proud member of VCor, the Virginia Caucus of Rank and File Educators, which is a progressive pro-labor caucus of the VEA. I'd like to sincerely thank the Board tonight for voting in favor of much-needed wellness days for NNPS teachers and staff. I'd like to sincerely thank the board tonight for voting in favor of much-needed wellness days for N N P S teachers and staff at the special board meeting last week. These days will make a big difference for our overworked teachers and will give us time to catch up on grading paperwork and our professional development homework. So thank you so much. Also, a big thank you to Dr. Parker and his team for recently paying teachers thirty dollars an hour to substitute teach during their planning block. I'm hearing of more and more teachers taking advantage of that, and thank you. Sometimes in life is in the classroom, when we solve one problem, other challenges arise. As noted in the Virginian Pilot article, "Is Extra Time Off Enough to Combat Teacher Burnout This School Year?" Quote, "Some of the teacher relief efforts, such as early dismissal on Wednesdays, have unintended consequences on bus drivers and hourly staff. Cutting back on hours of work can mean cutting back on hours of pay. I'm wondering if perhaps there's a way to fix this unintended consequence, perhaps by arranging for hourly staff to still be paid those days or perhaps providing a bonus to the hourly workers who will miss out on income during wellness days. Amidst a widespread shortage, bus drivers and other hourly workers are absolutely vital to our school district running successfully. Perhaps even a bonus for all workers amidst the pandemic. Morrisville School District in North Carolina made headlines earlier this month when they announced a three thousand dollar holiday bonus for staff. Another suggestion is to upgrade the pay that hourly N N P S workers receive when they are asked to serve as a substitute teacher. It's great. We recently increased it for teachers, but let's do that for staff as well. They currently only make a few dollars an hour more, I believe, to substitute. And substitute teaching is very hard work. There's a reason there's a shortage. It is a tough job, tougher than classroom teaching. So I'd, I'd say let's, let's pay our folks well. Finally, perhaps there could be a way to compensate and/or reward teachers when they have to watch extra students all day due to classrooms being split, when substitutes aren't available for an absent teacher, which is very, very often now. Having numerous extra students in the classroom presents a lot of challenges as teachers struggle to find space and materials for these students. And it makes it challenging for them to be able to effectively complete their lesson plans for the day in addition to just spraying everyone's nerves to have, you know, six or seven or however many extra bodies in the classroom that day. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Voss. Kia Taylor. Kia Taylor.
Hi, good evening, board. I was injured at work on nine twenty twenty-one and nine-one-one was called. The ambulance came and took me to Riverside. I was out for a whole week. When I got my bills, I sent them to H R, who in turn sent them back because it wasn't in their network. When nine-one-one was called, no one asked what network it is. They just called the ambulance and I went straight to Riverside. I would like for there to be some sort of team in place to help staff such as myself in getting information on what we can do. I did fill out an incident report. I did fill out workman's comp. But I don't know what else to do about my bills. That's all. Thank you.
So we have, we're going to connect you with an administrator. Please don't leave. In the back there. All right. Elizabeth Bissette. Bissette, Elizabeth Bissette. And next card after that will be Liliana Goba.
Hi, I'm Lily Goba. I'm a student at Warwick High School. I'm here today to talk about the dress code equality. Within our schools, we're, it's not the dress code that's the problem. It's the way it's administered. So we're always told, "Cover your shoulders. It's distracting for the boys." But they're never telling the boys, "Oh, just don't look." And the girls are getting dress coded for tank tops, but the boys have their pants sagging. And some come to, some, if they could, they would come to school shirtless. And administrators, some would probably not say anything as long as they have a jacket covering their shoulders. Well, my friend, like, two days ago, she got dress coded because her shirt was too tight, but she had a jacket covering it. While another boy, who, he's in my class, he was wearing a shirt, was yet again too tight, but he didn't have a jacket. And was showing more skin than any of our clothes. He didn't get dress coded. Our main issue is, they administer, when they're administering it, it's targeting it towards the girls rather than the boys or just equally distributing it. And we find that that's a problem because we've just been going on, being told, "Oh, well, it's distracting for the boys. They can't help themselves. They're just boys." And we find that's like the term, "Oh, it's just because he's a boy." That's their justifying statement. We think that's wrong. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Samantha Pipkin. Oh, please go ahead.
Um, hello. I would like to speak on the dress code of N N P S. And I'd like to give my opinion on the dress practices that are not allowed. Although I do agree that barefoot, bare feet should not be allowed. And also same with undergarments worn as regular day clothing. But in the summer, you know, people wearing shorts and tank tops, yes, there is a length that you do allow. Some people not, may not have access to buying those lengths, one because different body types and many other reasons. Tank tops and shorts that resemble undergarments should not be allowed, but it in general should, is how I feel. And I, one of my biggest concerns is tights and leggings. On gym days, most athletic clothing do revolve around tight shirts and leggings, but they are not allowed. But gym teachers tell us to dress appropriately for gym, but we can't do that without wearing tight clothing. So with that being said, that is one of my biggest concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pipkin. Kathleen Kelly. Go ahead whenever you're ready.
Hello. Thank you for letting us speak about an issue that is very important to me and my fellow students. I understand that in a school setting, students need to be dressed in a respectable and appropriate manner. We are not asking for the dress code to be changed to something that is inappropriate. We are asking that we have equal dress code. If girls are not allowed to show shoulders, boys should not be allowed to wear clothing that shows their shoulders. If girls are not allowed to wear tight-fitting clothing, boys should not be allowed to either. Our education is just as important as a boy's. We also deserve to be free of distractions. We have hormones as well. If you do not believe that showing a shoulder is an issue, then take it out of the dress code. Both sides of the dress code need to be enforced equally. They are not. We often see boys with their pants hanging low and nothing is said to them. Yet if I wear a T-shirt showing my shoulders, I am dress coded. We come here today to ask you to equalize the dress code. We come here today to ask you to be men and women of the twenty-first century and show equality among all genders. We come here today asking for only what should be given without us asking. We live in a day and age of equality. The student system needs to stand up and show that equality through all areas, including the very sexist dress code. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. I believe that this time I have exceeded our thirty-minute time limit. And at this time, in order to continue our item number two, then we would need an extension. Is there a motion to extend?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to extend fifteen minutes.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Four.
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 Mr. Hunter.
Four.
Mrs. Searl's Law.
Four.
Mr. Brown.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Right. Thank you. And I'm going to call this card one more time. Elizabeth Lisa Bissette. Just see if she's in the audience and we'll move that card. Hi, go ahead whenever you're ready.
You can.
Hi. My name's Lisa Bessel. I am a parent of a sixth grader at Gildersleeve Middle School. I've only ever been to one other school board meeting. And before I talk about the topic that I wanted to talk about, I just want to say that I think a lot of parents, students, staff, members of the school community, we often feel very hesitant to bother coming to these meetings. I've only ever been to one other because it often feels like y'all listen today and that's the end of the story. I'm sure that most of the people that are, have come before me feel similar. The last time I came, it was for an important issue at the elementary school, but it just had to do with the playgrounds and resource, recess. Today, what I'm talking about, I think, is much more significant. The school board's decision not to have textbooks. Maybe I'm in the minority, maybe I'm old-fashioned, but I have to tell you that the whole program is so disjointed between the school curriculum is a combination of websites and videos and some of them are YouTube videos. I don't even know if they're reputable educational sites and others are reputable sites. Trying to figure out what our kids are supposed to be focusing on in the core classes, STEM, science, history, English, math, is near impossible for me and my husband. We are on the parent view, the, the parent canvas, the kid, parent, the kid view, the kid canvas, looking around at all those things, trying to figure out what they're studying and what we're supposed to be practicing for the test or an assignment, and we cannot figure it out. It's very disjointed, at least having a textbook. And I know that several of the other school districts, because I've talked to teachers and students from neighbor, neighboring school districts are at least using online school books. It would give us some structure, some guideline, assist us in helping our kids study and keeping track of what they need to know and I'm losing my train of thought. Sorry. What they need to know and what, how we're supposed to help them. It's just been really impossible. And I urge the school board to consider at least bringing back some form of a textbook.
Thank you, Ms. Bessel.
That's it. Thank you.
Next card is Reverend James Brown.
Good evening, good evening, good evening.
Hello.
How's it going this evening?
Good.
Chairman Brown, Brother Parker, other distinguished personnel on the school board, I say good evening to you. It's always a pleasure to stand before you. But I'm here, as well as some of my fellow students, concerned about Huntington Middle School being moved. I've been down that area two or three times this week trying to figure out what's the advantage of flipping the school. And I can't see it. But our mayor is very adamant about putting the school on Twenty-Eighth Street. I don't know how much he knows about construction or schools or anything. But if you have a pool now on Twenty-Eighth Street and you're going to put the school down there, there's a whole lot more extra work that needs to be done in order to fill that ground in. There's a whole lot more cost to building the school on that property. And as far as, you know, taking part of the interest and saving that and attaching it somewhere, I don't know exactly how they can do that. I've worked on many buildings in which we attached another building too. But it seems to me that when I asked him about this two, two years ago, he scolded me like I was a child and asked me, "Who told me that they were going to move the school? Nobody told you they were going to move the school." But even at that time, two years ago, I'd heard from people that were qualified to make a statement that they were moving the school. So my thing is, today is, what's so important about him flipping the school? Why can't the school stay where it is? We need a school for education. Everybody's come up here tonight talking about education, the kids and the stress and attention and stuff that's in schools today. We need the school, and this school has been laid, delayed, and the mayor has blamed everybody, from the school board not putting in their budget on time, to everything else, to the late progress of the school. And it's time, we behind you. The school needs to be where it is and it needs to be built as soon as possible. And they need to turn their budget over to you. You need to handle the budget. You know what the school needs. They don't know what the school needs. They're just going to draw up something. They're more about economic development than about education of our kids. So I ask you, I beg you, to turn down any vote that doesn't allow you be in control of the finances and to make decisions as far as this school being located in different places. Twenty-Eighth Street is a busy street. It's right down that corner. And I don't think the school should be it. Thank you.
Diane Annette Tilly, Tillery.
Good evening. This is my first time coming to one of these school board meetings. You know, I am a parent. I am an employee. I am also a student. My biggest concern is that, yes, I understand that everybody is going through things with this pandemic and everything like that, but my concerns are the children's reading levels and why are the children being passed and they don't even know how to read? Like, they're being passed on to the next level. I'm trying to figure out what is going on in the schools. Like, I have a five-year-old. He's in kindergarten. And I am really trying to figure out what is going on. Like, my child is going to be growing up, going through the school system, and all of this is going on? Like, where, where's the help? I just really don't understand it. And everybody else's concerns out here, the teachers are stressing funding, what is really going on? Because I'm pretty sure that there's enough funding out there to get us what we need. Like, where, like, where's the compassion for our future? Our children are our future. Like, I, I am in early childhood development, so I am teaching one-year-olds and two-year-olds and three-year-olds right now. And it is very important to start at that level, teaching them the right things, you know, getting them prepared for the world that we're living in. But my thing is, is like, I'm just really trying to figure out what is the problem? What is the issue? I'm twenty-six years old. Like, my, my generation, I don't, I, we're not having it. Like, we're about to, like, really try to dig deep and try to figure out what's the problem because I, I don't like it. So that's, that's one of my cons, one of my concerns is that passing children and they can't read. Like, what happened to the A R tests that we used to take, like, back in school? I was in first grade reading at a fifth grade reading level. Like, where, where are the resources? Like, if everybody's so stressed out and, you know, tired and think, what, where, where do y'all come in to help? Where, where's the help? Like, I don't, I don't, I just don't understand and I just am very, very concerned. And this probably won't be my last time coming to one of these meetings, so I'm probably going to see my face a lot because I have a child in the school system now and I'm going to need for the school system to change. So that's just, that's all.
Thank you. Kalia Tulalaupua.
Hello, my name is Kalia Tulalaupua and I would, and I attend Woodside High School. I would like to talk today about the Newport News dress code. In eighth grade at Heinz Middle School, I was dress coded many times for wearing leggings. The administration told me this was because they didn't want me to be a distraction to other students. Most of my outfits were picked out by my mother. I was dress coded while other students who were smaller than myself were not. I was recently dress coded at Woodside for wearing my school-issued marching band uniform shorts on a band event day. I was recently dress coded at Woodside for wearing my school-issued marching band uniform shorts on a band event day. I do believe there should be a dress code, but an equal injustice one. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Joseph Gurley.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you. My name is Joseph Gurley. I'm here this evening to speak up for Huntington. I feel as if y'all doing us like you did Mr. Palmer back in 1943. He spoke up and you sacked him. Feel as if the city of Newport News are sacking Huntingtonians today. I'm here because I'm interested in Huntington. I graduated from Huntington in 1971. I stand with the people and ask for Huntington to be built at 3401 Orchid Avenue in the city of Newport News, Virginia. I'd like to leave you with this question. Do you see us? Do you hear us? Do you fear us? Let fear with respect. Do you respect us? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gurley. That is my last card. Madam Clerk, do we have any additional cards?
No, sir.
Are there any more cards? There being none, then we will move on to item three, which is our consent agenda. We thank the citizens for their comments this evening. Item three, the consent agenda, includes items 3.01, minutes from the joint meeting with City Council on October 12th, 2021; 3.02, minutes from the regular session meeting on October 19th, 2021; 3.03, minutes from the special meeting on October 19th, 2021; 3.04, work session on October 19th, 2021; 3.05, financial reports, including the revenue report for October 2021, the expense report for October 2021, child nutrition reports for October 2021; 3.06, the personnel report, 3.07, budget transfer. At this time, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ely. Any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Aiman?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right, then now we are on to action items.
Mr. Chairman, we have some appointments.
Oh, yes, we did. So, do we need to have a vote to approve those appointments?
Yes.
All right, so at this time, may I have a motion to approve the superintendent's personnel recommendations?
Yes, I have a motion to approve the superintendent's personnel recommendations for Vivica Rutland for Assistant Principal for Newsome Park Elementary and Marshall Early Childhood Center; Amanda McCauley for Administrative Assistant for Denby Early Childhood Center; and Marcus Neves for Supervisor of Academic Planning and Data Analysis.
Thank you. You heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ely. Any further discussion? All right, there being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Aiman?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right, and Dr. Parker, do you have some comments about these new appointees?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll go through our three appointees this evening. First, I'd like to introduce Vivica Rutland as new Assistant Principal for Newsome Park and Marshall Early Learning Center. And if Ms. Rutland is here, she can stand. Hey, good evening. Congratulations. And Ms. Rutland has a Supervision and Leadership Endorsement from Longwood University, a Master of Arts Degree in Teaching from the University of Phoenix, and her Bachelor of Science Degree in Inner Disiplinary Studies from Old Dominion University. Ms. Rutland began her career teaching in Newport News in 2002, that is correct, and worked at Magruder Early Learning, Early Childhood Center, Briarfield Elementary School, Greenwood Elementary, and Newsome Park Elementary Schools. Currently, she is serving as the Administrative Assistant at Newsome Park Elementary, and we are congratulating her this evening for her next step in her career with Newport News Public Schools. So thank you for being here and welcome. Do you have any members of your family you'd like to introduce? Did you introduce yourself?
Yes, well, I have my two principals here supporting me also, and I have my family, Stefan, and then I have my two boys, Lawson and Gianni.
Welcome, welcome. And congratulations. Our second appointee is Ms. Amanda McCauley, as the new Administrative Assistant at Denby Early Childhood Center. Ms. McCauley?
Good evening. Ms. McCauley has an EDS in Administration from Old Dominion University, her Master's Degree of Arts in Special Education, and a Bachelor of Science in Human Development from Virginia Tech. Ms. McCauley started her career in education in 2005 as a teacher for Public Schools 72 in Brooklyn, New York. She continued her career in education after relocating to Virginia, teaching at both the elementary and secondary levels in Richmond, Mechanicsville, Hampton, and Virginia Beach. Ms. McCauley will be leaving a teaching assignment at Point of View Elementary School in Virginia Beach to assume her new position with Newport News Public Schools as an Administrative Assistant. So welcome, Ms. McCauley, to Newport News Public Schools, and as you introduce yourself, if you've brought any special guests, please feel free to introduce them as well.
Oh, no, so I'm Amanda McCauley, and, you know, my older kids are at Boy Scouts tonight. One is about to go, I mean Eagle Scout, so. And then I have two babies, so husband and daughter babies.
Hopefully, they're viewing in or they can look at the recording, but we wanna thank you for taking this assignment with Newport News Public Schools and welcome you to our new team. And our final appointee this evening is Mr. Marcus Neves. Good evening, sir. As the new Supervisor of Academic Planning and Data Analysis. Mr. Neves has a Master Degree of Business Administration from the College of William &amp; Mary, a Master of Educational Leadership from George Washington University, and his Bachelor of Technical Management from Embry-Riddle University. Mr. Neves has served in the U.S. Air Force, thank you for your service, was a CT Department Chair for Pecoson City Public Schools, and currently serves as the Program Director of Business and Liberal Arts Education for Bryant and Stratton College. Mr. Neves, we welcome you to the Newport News family. I think you mentioned your better half is occupied this evening, but please introduce yourself to the board.
Marcus Neves, and the reason why my family isn't here, I have a little three-year-old who's a little bit temperamental today. So we decided this is probably not the right form for him, so it's just me tonight, but thank you so much for the appointment.
Well, we thank you for joining our Newport News team and look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
That concludes our appointments this evening, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Dr. Parker. And so now we'll move on to our action item 4.01, which is our proposed new and revised policies. And Dr. Parker, do you have a short presentation for us?
I believe Mrs. Brooks has provided a policy update review at the last board meeting and has given the board adequate time for review, and she is available to answer any questions that the board may have before taking action.
All right, and with that, then may I have, please have a motion to approve 4.01, proposed new and revised policies?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the proposed new and revised policies as presented.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. All right, any further discussion or questions about the policies? All right, there being none, then Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Aiman?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right, so then now we are on to item 4.02, which is the Huntington Site Layout. And so at this time, may I have a motion to approve the Huntington Site Layout?
Did you want me to?
Oh, yes.
Any remarks, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, we do. Why don't we go ahead and we'll take the motion, then we'll include the presentation in the discussion. So may I have a motion to approve the Huntington Site Layout?
Yes, I have a motion to approve Southeast Community Resource Area Master Plan as represented in the slide presented to the school board, and then we're also gonna get to see that again.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hunter. So at this time, yes, Dr. Parker, if you would, please summarize for the board our standing of the Huntington Site Layout, so we can...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the screen here is the existing area that's being considered for the Southeast Community Resource Area. This area includes, the area generally defined as being bounded by 28th Street, 35th Street, Wickham Avenue, and Orchid Avenue. On the current site that's being proposed for the Southeast Community Resource Area is Huntington Middle, is the current existing structure of Huntington Middle School, the Scott Center, Doris Miller Community Center, and then other amenities such as fields and other amenities that are associated with those sites. The city's plan for the Southeast Community Resource Area is developing a 21st Century one-stop shop that supports all residents, educates the mind, body, and spirit, and creates a distinctive community gathering place. That is the vision behind the proposed SECRE project. On that site, existing site, would be the new Huntington Middle School, which would be built in collaboration with the city for this project. Next slide. The proposed timeline for, from the start to finish, the opening Huntington Middle School, which is the business of the school division, is to, as we've worked with the city on contracting Quinn Evans as an architect for the project, they were contracted in spring of 2021. They were given the time, a deadline of the fall, to bring forward a master plan for the SECRE project for approval before beginning the design phase for those facilities, which takes up to 12 months to design both the middle school project and with the layouts necessary to move forward to a build. So we are currently in the fall of 2021 at the time, and we are looking at the master plan, which the architect has moved forward as their primary recommendation for the SECRE project. Once that, once that project is approved to move forward by both the city and the school division, a design phase for the middle school will begin. It takes approximately 12 months, so roughly around, just extrapolating that, expanding that out, roughly around the fall of 2022, we should have a middle school design completed that the board would again reengage and approve prior to the city moving forward in the bid process to develop, to contract the contractor, the necessary contractor to begin the build. That bidding process normally takes around three months, and then you'd enter the construction phase, which would take another 18 months, usually a year and a half. Sometimes it can be expanded longer, depending on delays, weather, materials, labor, those types of things. But roughly around 18 months, there is nothing keeping the site from being occupied seven days a week for the build, so they could accelerate as needed to get that construction project done. That would be the goal. Our goal is to enter that facility in August of 2024. So just looking at the timeframe that we have mapped here, we're on a tight timeline, obviously getting the work moving forward so that we can begin the design phase, which would be really where we would start ticking to get that building opened on time. So this is the Quinn Evans Proposed Master Plan for the Southeast Community Resource Area, the entirety of the project. It includes the existing original structure of Huntington Middle School, of Huntington High School, excuse me, which would be incorporated into community building as the initial facade, as the front facade for that community building. The plan includes for that, the historical element of Huntington High School to be restored or salvaged in that building with a museum-type impact, and also for there to be community spaces in that portion of the community building, which would allow for community access as well as a library. The remaining community building consists of gymnasium and swimming spaces, indoor swimming, and other amenities that would support the community. On the far end of that facility, of that campus, is the middle school, which, as we had requested, or as our primary choice, was to have the middle school separated from any existing other buildings. So it is a standalone, separate facility on the opposite side of that campus. And in between those areas, you have a multipurpose field, courts, and then playgrounds for the community, as well as a splash park, amphitheater, and community gardens. Next slide. So looking at the community side, the community side of that, again, just a little close-up of what that would entail, that space would incorporate the original existing structure of Huntington High School, and the efforts would be made to provide the museum effect necessary to salvage the history, retain the history of that historic high school for the community in that portion of the building. And from there, the other community pieces would support recreation and/or some level of service for the community, as well as providing outside resources such as basketball courts, amphitheaters, plays, concerts, whatever, and community garden. Next slide. The opposite side of that would be a multipurpose field, which would support regulation football and/or soccer and other sports, which would be maintained by the school division, as well as parking area where staff would park and/or visitors to the community center. But those, our portion of the land on that site would be incorporating parking spaces, the multipurpose field, and obviously the school. The middle school itself follows the format that Quinn Evans used, our feasibility study, and as part of the input for this plan, our feasibility study called for a building to be designed to support STEAM education and/or arts curriculum, as well as larger CTE areas that would allow us to have some serviceable CTE programs in that facility as well, and enclosed courtyard, which would allow for students to also have learning spaces outside of the facility, which would not be accessible to the public, and then also have the opportunities to have external recreation on the multipurpose field and/or through the, through working with the community center, access to the swimming program, to the swimming facilities and/or the basketball courts. So, and moving forward to recommendation, there had to be several things that were taken into consideration, including, and also balanced with the interests of the community as well in making this recommendation this evening. One was design considerations, and we have done a feasibility study. We took a very good amount of time to determine what type of middle school we wanted, what programs would be needed in that middle school, and at the end of the day, what benefits us, the school division, better is a new construction would allow us to design that facility as, in the way that we need it for those instructional programs. A new construction facility would ensure better acoustics, indoor air quality, lighting, and energy management under today's standards. So building, renovating something or incorporating an existing structure versus building a new construction, from that standpoint, the school division would benefit better from a new construction. Cost considerations, the emphasis on cost for a new middle school should be contained to the cost of building the facility with the necessary land allotted for a comprehensive middle school program. We've mentioned all the way through this project that we needed a middle school, that 600-student middle school that would allow us to run a full middle school program, and that includes the external and internal spaces that would accommodate that. Our considerations in this project does not weigh into what other costs might be implied by the SECRE project. If the city wants something else on their facility, if they wanna look at the cost of that, our focus is on the middle school and what it would cost to build a middle school. Currently, we know that we have $40 million allocated towards the development of Huntington Middle School, which, I'll say again on this die, is I do not believe will meet the cost of that facility. I believe that facility will be upwards of $50 to $60 million. So with that being said, the goal of keeping cost in mind and making sure that the cost that's incorporated goes into the middle school and not necessarily for building a new street or trying to accommodate an existing structure or those types of things, is not in the best interest of the school division at this time. Potential for shared spaces and community use, this plan allows for shared space usage with SECRE between city and school division resources. So while we do not own these facilities and do not want to maintain those facilities, we would have access to aquatics, to recreational experiences off, beyond our campus. The library and the community center would be available, and then they have an amphitheater space. So we believe that for a student experience and experiences of our families, that we would benefit from this project. So those are some of the things that are the basis behind looking at this design, and I would say to the board in terms of the location of Huntington Middle And I would say to the board in terms of the location of Huntington Middle School, the, the simple, the questions that were asked Quinn Evans simply were, would it, would it incur costs? And what were the, some of the incurred costs with, with using the existing structure of Huntington High School in the middle school? And those, several of those things that were mentioned were, one, their 30th Street will be closed off and it will become a bus, it will be, become a bus transportation lane. So there, there is a street already there, obviously building a street on the other side of the campus that for bus transportation would add to the cost of the school side of the project. The incorporating a three-story facility, building in, which, which is what, what the historical building is, it's a three-story structure, the cost would be incurred to try to match that building, basically gutting that, that portion of the building out. And costs would be incurred if we wanted to do any museum-type effect, if we wanted to try to make those spaces, anything that would accommodate community. Currently, based on our, our feasibility study, the best the architect, architect could answer was those spaces, some of those spaces would be used for administrative space and/or elective classrooms. And with any existing structures on the third floor, which would not necessarily be needed under our project design, would be something like collaborative spaces, which our feasibility study does not call for. So there are some incurred costs associated with, with relocating their plans and swapping sections. Noise was not a factor into the determination. That was another consideration that I was asked to go back and look into because both of those buildings are enclosed facilities and the people will be in the buildings. So it's not necessarily, it's creating more noise than what you would, would, would be used to in that portion of the city, from that, from that campus site. So with that being said, I did want to look into both of those. Was there additional costs associated? Would it be something that we would benefit the middle school for the school division? And with that being said, a new construction would still be the first choice. As superintendent, that would be my recommendation to pursue a, a new construction under these, under these circumstances, knowing that you do not have all of the acquired funding that you would need in order to complete the project. So, Mr. Chairman, I would move forward this recommendation to this, for this plan to the school board for your consideration this evening. We will always continue to work with the city and make sure that we get the best project possible. I do believe that it's in our best interest to open in the fall of 2024 and to stay on course with that. I do believe that a new construction is in the best interest of the school division. We'll be able to design the building as we need it and, and also benefit from the, from the, from the design as well in terms of lighting, energy management, program management, and instructional programming. So this evening, once we move the, this decision to the board, the next steps will, if it meets the interest of the school division by keeping the project moving forward, we'll do so. If the board decides that is their wish, otherwise we will need to reengage the city in the development of this site.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. So I know that there's going to be lots of questions and comments. So what we want to try to do is we'll do a round of questions, all right? Ask you to ask one question at a time so that every board member gets a chance to ask a question. And then, of course, we'll have a chance for comments before we, before our call for the vote. So I'll just ask right now, are there questions? Yes, Dr. Bass, please.
That is the new plan. Was there any, Dr. Parker, any conversation, I don't recall the meeting I was in, regarding the 28th Street? And what I'm thinking about is like tonight, as I was on my way here to the meeting, that's a one-way street with two lanes of traffic. On trash day, all the trash cans go on the side of the school, on the side of the street where the school is. I see that there is shrubbery, there is, probably will be a fence. But those children that live close to the school will have to navigate around that trash. And that's just like one of the things that I foresee that could be a, a concern. It's, it's not a, a, the, the most important thing, but just one of the things is concerned. Was anything said about things like that? Because when we talked about this plan in the meeting, we talked about 28th Street and the volume of traffic and it being a one-way, and then it was just a decision made, and, and now we're here. So, just one.
Well, I, I asked the representative from city planning and Wade, I'm sorry, could, what was the first, the name of the representative for city planning? And I'm trying to, trying to remember her name, she was on the Zoom call, Mr. Brown, that's when we, when we... But I asked the question, say again, sir? Sheila McAllister. I asked Mrs. McAllister about the, the city, from the city planning aspects of the design, of the project, was there any consideration? Now, at the point, we were talking about noise. I didn't ask about, you know, trash pickup or anything of those natures. But we were talking about noise and impact on disturbances to the community. And she said from, from a city's planning standpoint, she did not see any concerns with, and she did mention that, that both, with both of the buildings being located on the exterior sides, people are in the buildings, that actually would be less of a noise effect than the original camp, the original design where everything is right now. But that would be something I did not ask, or I was not aware of and did not ask. I do know that as a city planner, that's more there, something they should consider in city operations more than, than the school division in terms of, you know, we want to be good, good neighbors and, and with our, with the community that we are serving. But those types of things, if, if we, as a school division, were developing this site, we would be meeting with the community and talking through these type of things and making sure that we have everything in, in place for that. And I would assume that would take place during the design and build to make sure those, those things are managed.
Ms. Ammon, yes?
I would just tag on that, looking forward to, say, the design-build process. One of the things that came up in the joint meeting was if you had parents who wanted to pick up and drop off their students, they were looking at around the outside block as, as a way to do that. But if that's taken up by, say, trash pickup, or depending on the direction of the traffic, that would need to be taken into consideration. So you don't have one day a week where that's what parents are doing. They've got to have an alternate route. So that's a question, I guess more to build on, things we want to make sure we take care of if we, if we go this way.
Thank you, Ms. Ammon. Mr. Harris, did you have your hand up?
No, I didn't.
Okay. Other questions? I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask a, a question, which is just to, you know, re, reframe where we are, where we've been. Dr. Parker, when did Huntington Middle School, when did we first shutter Huntington Middle School? What year was that?
2019.
It was, I came in July of 18, and, and first board meeting attended, we were, Huntington was closed. So I'm assuming 17, 18?
It was the 18, 19 school year.
June 2018.
And so Huntington has been shuttered for three years, and I'm just gonna, you know, fast forward. The next question was, I think you seem to recall that we had a joint meeting with city council where they approved, it was $2.8 million for a design of Huntington Middle School on the, on the same site. And I believe that year was 2019?
Yes, sir.
And at this point in time, it's 2021. I'll still ask the, the question that I, that I've been asking for the last couple of years. Have we received any of that funding?
That funding has been appropriated by the city into four, four million, into their four million-plus design for the SECRE project. So we did not receive, that money was not appropriated to us to design our own middle school. We did, we paid for a feasibility study and hired our own architect to design the, the, the middle school design that we wanted to move forward with. The 2.8 would have been used to hire an architect to do the one year's worth of design that was necessary to, to design that middle school to move forward with construction. Since this project has begun, the city has appropriated the funds on their ledger. So the $40 million and the four, and now it's four-plus million will be incorporated for the design of both Huntington Middle School and the community building and the remainder of this project, and that's how it will be paid for. Additionally, $40 million is there for the construction of the middle school at this time.
And I believe that the, we have since, you know, been, moving forward, been, it's been a few years now. What is the, the, you know, the, some of the concerns or the reasons for bringing this, this forward now in terms of us being able to approve it? And what's it do to our timeline if we cannot approve the site plan at this, at this time in terms of the fall of 2024?
So the school division submitted a memorandum of understanding to the city to make sure that we have an active partnership with them in, in the building of the middle school. And that will require us to have onsite access at, during the construction phase and attend all meetings associated with the development of Huntington Middle School. Additionally, according to that MOU, we would ask, we would hire a clerk of the works who would work for the school division to monitor the day-to-day progress of the development of Huntington Middle School and report directly to the school division any concerns and/or delays or issues with that, that may happen during that site development process. So in that MOU, it is, it is required that the school board bring up the topic of the master plan. It is appropriate for us to, to approve the master plan for, for the Southeast Community Resource Area because there will be some land transition based on where the site, where the school is currently sitting and where the middle school is proposed to be built, as well as the locations of the amphitheater and the multipurpose fields. So with that being said, it will be appropriate for the school board to review that consideration and/or approve it. Next would be the design of Huntington Middle School. Once the architect has done the full design of the middle school and we have a realistic rendering of the middle, of what, what will be, what that middle school project would look like, and the cost associated and all of the other, the factors that are associated with it, historical renderings and renovation, and relevance and everything else, the board would take one and review that design and approve the design of Huntington Middle School prior to it being built. So the MOU is really our catch-all to make sure that we are actively involved in this project. The city is not, and as I've always said, it has never been my intention for the city to build a middle school for new, for new public schools. I think we need to be active partners in that process and have the, have the control to say, if there's something we don't agree with, that we have proper protocols in place to make sure that that's, that that's managed appropriately. So the MOU will do that for us.
And I'll just, I'll continue to hog the questions since I don't see hands raised.
I have one more as well.
And ask the, the same, similar questions that I asked last week, which is, we are going to have another vote to approve the actual design of Huntington Middle School. And at that point, that would be another potential exit point if things are not progressing the way that we, we, the board, need them to. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then in terms of the transfer?
Well, the second part of your question, if this is not, if this is not approved, we would obviously reengage with the city and, and the architect to look at the other aspects of the project. I don't know how long that would take. And we would never, we would not have any guarantee, one, how the cost, cost, any costs associated with the change would be managed, or the timeline for completing the project.
And I see, Dr. Bass, you had another question?
My question is regarding the transfer of the land. Can, how, can you build on property that does not belong to you? Because my understanding is the deed would not be transferred until the construction is done.
Yeah, we just did that with the Scott project. They, they built on land that did not belong to them.
So, so there are some provisions made in this agreement?
Before it's turned over, before the project is turned over, the deed has to transfer. So just going back to our Scott project that was just completed, we held on to our deed, to that, to that land, to the land that the city needed, and we held on until they, until we felt we were well enough ahead with the Scott project, and then we obviously turned over the deed and, and took the deed. Question, Mr. Wallen, I just want to make sure legally, from a legal standpoint, I'm, I'm not wading into any water I shouldn't wade into, is in terms of control of the land, would it be appropriate to turn that over once the, once we receive the control of our facility and our, and our building? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, from the beginning, I've never been comfortable with the, you know, with our position or what I say, we put ourselves in certain positions. You know, I'm a firm believer, once you advocate your duties and responsibilities completely to another voting body, then everything you say and do after that really means nothing. Okay? And I just want to make sure that we understand that fully and completely. It is our duty and responsibility, by the Code of Virginia, to build a school if we so desire. That is the reason why they put mechanisms in place, gave us options, that we have not yet to explore. Now, I know that requires some, some soul circuit and some intestinal fortitude to go down a particular path, but you really don't know what to expect unless you go down that path. And so I, I've been, I've had this position from the beginning. I've discussed with you many a times. This is what I do for a living, and you're, you're, you're dealing with, you're dealing with finicky subjects, especially if partnerships have not shown any goodwill, per se, toward us. It's something we need to think about as a board. Do we completely advocate our duties and responsibilities? Because at the end of the day, if it's not built, we can't go to the city and go, hey, it's your fault. Citizen's not going to hear that. It's our school. It's our children that we have to educate. Yeah, we go into partnership with the city, but it has to be based off of goodwill. It has to be based off of historical data. It has to be based off of prior relationships. It has to be based off of, they have to put skin into the game fully, completely, and then we execute. Check the record.
And the other option is to have a strong MOU that outlines your, your involvement in that partnership.
Correct.
And it's in black, plain, black and white and signed by those involved. Which is, I think the latter is, will probably serve us better than waiting for goodwill because it hasn't shown up yet.
Right. And this has nothing to do with the administration. I'm, I'm, I'm speaking to my peers, my board members. Okay? You, just making sure that you completely understand the cause and effect. Okay? Anyone can design a building. I mean, we, we all can do that, you know? Designs look nice. We pay for designs. In theory, you don't pay for designs until, until contracts are, are signed over. Then you get into the design phase. Okay? We're designing stuff ahead of contract even being done. So that is really, we've been wasting time for years designing. Okay? So just keep that in mind when we move forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Yes, Ms. Ammon.
On the cost of the middle school, I just wanted to ask, are, you know, we're concerned about the, the conceptual 40 million to build a middle school. And are there budgetary benefits to considering this plan in that if we're concerned, that's not enough? Does this approach versus not switching the site plan, does this approach have aspects that may let us come in a little bit less than if we were to maintain the school currently where it is?
Now, I would fundamentally say, and Mr. Beverly's here, sitting here, he can confirm or deny, but I don't believe, any, any plan we approve tonight may fly us under the radar at $40 million.
Right.
Do you believe that?
No.
I believe there will be additional costs associated. We know that we have construction going, costs are going up, materials, labor, and, and, and obviously delays in some, in some materials and those type of things. I believe we will see the challenges of what everyone is seeing in construction, construction throughout this project, and I think that is going to, to impact, to impact the cost. Regarding your question of will it be less than if we looked at a different scale, a different design with the incorporating the, the traditional building into it, I believe that cost would be higher because we would have to do quite a bit more to, to make that a manageable part of the middle school project in, in terms of the facility, and also the traffic pattern. We would have to build a street right there where that, right in front of that little area where the, between the basketball courts and the playgrounds. That would pretty much need to be that bus, that self-contained bus transportation route right there. That would also need to be a developed street or paved area right there. That would probably be some, some, some additional costs associated with that. But from that standpoint, I think those, I think we are going to see additional costs in this project. I've said it all along, but that, our MOU does call for the city to fully fund the project. So whatever that cost may be, that would have to be part of their agreement. And, and just for clear transparency to the public, that MOU has not been signed yet. I have a meeting with the city manager after the holidays, Thanksgiving break, to, to discuss their, any, any changes that they're recommending for the MOU.
Thank you, Ms. Ammon. Yes, another question? Yes?
Oh, mention, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Speaking of the MOU, it hasn't been signed yet. If we were to vote to approve this site plan and not end up with a satisfactory MOU or rebound by this site plan? If we were to vote to approve this site plan and not end up with a satisfactory MOU, are we bound by this site plan?
We could walk away at any time from that standpoint, if we're honest. If we don't, if we don't agree with this new MOU, we have no control over the design and build of our building without any more. I, I would not accept those conditions.
So I'll ask the, I'll ask again the, the question I asked last week, which was around, we get to fall of twenty, so if we get to fall of 2024 and the costs have escalated, it turns into what I, what I predict is going to be probably a seventy, seventy million dollar project? Or there's some issues with the construction, the, the school is not completed yet, et cetera. What recourse do we have? Are we still able to walk away? Will we still have our land and in essence be able to go back to the city and say, well, this didn't work out. Now let's go ahead and build a school on our property? Would that be a scenario that's available to us under those circumstances?
So there's two things you need to factor in. One, we, we own the land, but the land could be, could be, what's the appropriate term, Mr. Wallen?
Confiscated.
Condemned by the city and they could take the land. So with that being said, you know, this, the city, local, the local governing body has more control than, 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 than the school division in terms of construction, funding and those types of things. So eventually that, that is the answer now. If we walked away from this project, technically the project would not be able to proceed without that process. They would have to condemn the property and take ownership of it in order to build, build and design whatever they would want to, want to do in that particular case. But, but we would not, they can't build on our, they can't build or design anything on land that the school division currently owns without our, without our approval. And either attorney, if you have anything to add to that, please feel free to do so.
Were you going to ask a question?
Actually, Ms. Am, Ms. Ammon said exactly what I was wondering. If we did not get the satisfactory MOU.
It's in development. I have a meeting after, after Thanksgiving break.
So if we do not get that, we vote this evening and we don't get that, then we're not bound because we don't have that MOU.
Still not bound.
Okay.
All right.
And the deed is still in with the school division. So.
Yeah, you know, Mr. Chairman, yeah, the, the deed is still with the school division. I mean, as I read it, you know, the bottom line, the land does belong to us. Again, you know, just me, I figured if we had went down the road of public-private partnership, that information still would have to go to the city to give approval.
Right.
So if they denied it, then at least you could say we tried. If it goes through, then we march, march very on and build where we want to build. But if we don't know, you know, because right now what we're doing, we're putting this in, in, in the hands and faith of the city. And I just, for some reason, I just, I'm just not comfortable with that. Even though I know we have extended, you know, I think more than enough to that body, you know, to assist us and we requested and requested and requested. You know, at what point do we say, hey, you know, we have the authority to pursue this on our own? I mean, we have the authority to do it, you know, by the Constitution of the state of Virginia. We have that authority, but we have never tried. Again, no one is going to blame the city. If this doesn't get built, no one's going to blame the city. If someone decides to say, no, no, we, we want to add this to the MOU, they're going to blame the school board. Okay? And I'm willing to take my responsibility. I'm not going to take responsibility for what somebody else do. All right?
The only thing I would probably say, Mr. Harris, is if that, if that was the case and we pursued, at this point, pursued a, a different avenue, we would probably be looking at 2026 sometime, sometime way down the line to try to get a, get a middle school built.
Right.
I mean, you're still, and you're still, you're still making, taking the same gamble with the city approving whatever you're planning on doing. And I think there would be, there wouldn't be the goodwill there to think that, in my opinion, to think that would go through.
And that's true, Mr. Chairman. So again, Mr. Chairman, it boils down to what is the temperature of this school board? You know, and notice I don't say administration. What is the temperature of this school board? You know, what is the temperature? You know, there's things like this have come along such as COVID, you know, where you're tested, you know, on your, our decision-making skills and how much are we willing to put into it to get what we know this city, the children, the parents deserve? All right? This just didn't start two years ago. It started before you even come to the state of Virginia. Okay? So eventually we're going to have to put a cap on it. Eventually we're going to either say, hey, guess what? Take it all and we just stand by and let you do what you wish? Or we take the hard road? You know, I don't think the road is that hard, to be honest with you. It's just me and that's based off my experiences. So I just ask each board member to think about that. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
All right.
So I believe we have gone through questions now. So I'll just, we'll go ahead and make comments from everyone, give everyone an opportunity to make a comment. And we'll go Ms. Ammon first and then Mr. Hunter will come to you.
And I guess, I don't know if this is a comment or a question, but I think we, we need to take into consideration the risks on both paths. And this may be a legal question, but if, let's say we choose not to, we vote not to approve this. And so we pursue another path. What is the timeframe at which the city might say no and you're not using it for a school and therefore we're going to condemn it anyways? Are we playing a game of chicken, if you will, on that? What's the risk factor there and the likelihood of that and the horizon for that risk versus considering something like this? Which may not be ideal, may come in a little less expensive and ahead of time and may, our goal is to provide a good 21st century middle school for today's students, certainly honoring the Huntington legacy, but also doing our best for our students. So I, I don't know if it's a question or not, but I, I think we have risks on both sides to consider.
Yes.
And condemnation is a process. I don't know how long that process is, which I don't feel that the city, someone else does in my office, but.
Well, I think before we talk about condemnation, we need to talk about some very basics. And one of those basics is that the school division has no legal authority to borrow money to construct anything. So if you're going to build a school in Virginia, you need to have the consent and authority provided from the city council to provide the money to do the construction. Without that consent, no construction is going to happen. I am not aware of any legal theory which would support a board saying, I want to build a school. You must therefore fund the school I want to build and force the council to borrow the money to fund the school. I'm not aware that that's ever happened. I would not think that that is appropriate. So it seems to me that where you are factually at this point, and I used to go to planning commission meetings for 25 or 30 years. So I've got some understanding of the planning process. And some of this is jargon, some of this is practicality. This is just a plan. This is a way of structuring future actions to figure out how you're going to go forward or not go forward. If you were to say, I don't like this plan, then the city, you'd go back to the city and say, we don't like the, the school board doesn't like this plan. We'd, we'd like you to amend the plan. And presumably you would give them some insight as to how you would like the plan to be amended and they could do that or not. But if you approve this master plan tonight, what it really does is allow the city and the school division then to move forward with this general layout. We don't have a school design yet. They don't have their community facility design yet. None of the technical details have been done, but it doesn't make any sense to attempt to do those things unless and until you know where the buildings are going to be. So you have to find out where the buildings are going to be, then you can begin a design process. The way we've attempted to structure the MOU, and I think the city manager is on board with there being some sort of an MOU the question is going to be the detail. But I think the city understands that if the school division is going to have a building that it's going to have to maintain and operate for decades, that we ought to have some input into the construction of the building and the design of the building. And they're going to probably accept some sort of MOU that creates the predicate for all those things that happen. But none of that happens until you have a basic layout and you know where the buildings are going to be. The MOU is designed in a way that we hope to have substantial, if not veto, input into the design. That would be the preference that the school division is the educational expert, presumably. Even if the city wants to build the facility and it appears that it does, the school board would get to help determine the programs that would be in the building, how the layout of the building, how it would be designed. And then through the MOU, we'd also be able to monitor the construction and complete the building in a way that would be satisfactory to the school system. So I think we're at a chicken and egg point to the extent that the real request tonight is, is the layout okay? That's all that's being requested. If the layout is acceptable, then all the other details can be worked on. And many of those details are going to have to come back before you, like this, the design, like the MOU. And those things are opportunities for the board to have additional input, say, I don't want to go this direction. I don't want a school. If this is the way you're going to do it, I don't want a school. All those things are available to the, the school board. But this is a way to get started. But I do want to emphasize that, as I understand it, the school board can't borrow money itself to build anything. And so unless, until you get the cooperation of your local governing body to borrow the money to build the facility, you can't build anything. And that always is going to be a difficult situation. You're going to have to negotiate the, the dollars involved and the effect on other projects. All those things come into play. But I, I don't know a way to finance the construction of this facility without getting bond money from the city council. And they're the only ones that can borrow.
Mr. Chairman, a point of order.
Yes, Mr. Harris.
Yeah, I'd like to clarify the record. I don't think no one up here said that we would go borrow money. I think my statement was that if we go down the route of PPE, it still has to go through the city. So I don't think no one said that we would go borrow money, which I think we all know that we can't go borrow money to build a school. I said, if we go down the route of private-public partnership that forces the city to say yes or no, then I said, at least we have tried that route. And once that happens, then we go back to plan whatever case may be. So no one, no one.
It's functionally a different way of borrowing money.
Well, 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 not the way it's said. I said, we go through the route of PPE. So the PPE explains the process on how we come about getting the city to either agree to it. I never said that we as a school division go out and borrow money to go build, let's say, a school. Otherwise, we wouldn't be having this conversation if we could do it. It would already been done. The route of PPE allows us to step forward and say, guess what? We're going to take the lead on this. City still has to approve or deny. So at least we know where they exactly stand. If they deny it, then we are forced to go back down this road.
We do not yet have a PPE process in the school division.
And you're exactly right. And again, I speak to my peers and say, this is where we, as peers, not administration, peers of minds, this is where we have to say, at what point do we ensure that we at least test the duty or check our duties and responsibilities? Because this is a process that the state gave us just in case we run into this situation. That's the reason, that's the reason they put it in there for situations like this, because every city does not work with every school board. I mean, that's, and every city works with school boards. That's the reason why we put it in there. So I just want to make sure we as a school board understand that fully, that we do have a, another option to clarify the relationship to its fullest extent. Because we can write MOUs all we want, we can sign them all we want, but until we know for sure, where do other people actually stand? And this is just a mechanism to do that. We don't have to go down there, you know, because it's still a vote for my peers. I just want to make sure they understand why I stand on the matter when it comes time to relationship building.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Thanks.
And so I believe, Mr. Hunter was going to make, make his, thank, and thank you, Mr. Wallen. I believe Mr. Hunter was going to make a comment.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I've, I've heard a lot today and, you know, let me tell you about partnerships. Partnership is about relationships, right? And even though we, we've had a strength relationship with the city, when we got elected, our, our, our responsibility are students, right? And we want a building, a state-of-the-art building for our students to get there. And no, this may not be the plan that some of us like, some of us don't like. But when the city looks at it, we're looking at the school, the city looks at a whole master plan when you, when you look at a building, you know? And like I said again, we can't borrow money. You know? We said, we can't borrow money. So we, we go the PPE route. And then the city says, okay, tell you what we're going to do. We, we'll agree with you and we'll give you four, forty million dollars, period. Period. We know already we cannot build a school for forty million dollars. How, how far do we keep pushing this can down the street for the sake of kids being in the building and learning? You know, in the modern building that you knew? And we, we have made progress. You know, I'll be the one that first to say that, you know, if Huntington was still built today, we, our kids wouldn't be in there. No one knew about the coronavirus. That, that building would was, would never suffice under the conditions that we are today. If, if the coronavirus and we still had Huntington, our kids would not be there. Under this new plan, we do get a Huntington. Huntington shall rise. Maybe not at that location. But those students that are in first and second grade, they get the opportunity. Why not give them the pleasure? Sometimes it's not about us. It's not about us. Our job as school board members are for students, for students and students to come forth. We must learn to compromise. We must learn to compromise. My whole job, what I do for a living is partnerships. That's what I, that's what I do. We learn to give and take. There was a $3.1 trillion budget out there, infrastructure budget. Guess what? They just passed it for 1.2 trillion. It's compromise. We must compromise sometimes for the sake of our children who are going into that building. We must. Furthermore, I'm not 1,000% enjoying this plan, but one thing I do when I look at it, that because I heard all the, this stuff from Huntington, how it used to be the hub of the community? Because that was the first black high school there. If we put that community inside of a school, it limits the people that can come in during certain hours. We want to build the community so that the community can come see Huntington. Because Huntington was more than just a school. That's what I'm hearing. It's more, it was more than just a school. It was the hub, the community center. That's what Huntington was to those Huntington folks that went to school there. We must, as a school board, we have to sometime, believe in ourselves, believe that we move forward. Because guess what? Here's a plan in front of us. Those without a plan, plan to fail. And I'm not sitting here and waiting for us to, none of us, not very few of us on this board, understand PPE. We don't have a plan here. None of us may even be on the board at the time. We making a whole brand-new city council and a new school board. Once we put those trailers there at Heritage High School, a new people says, guess what? Mr. Ch, Mr. School Superintendent, how long will those trailers last? Oh, we get about 10 to 12 years? Good. We'll think about building a new Huntington 10 to 12 years down the road. When many of us may not even be here. We need to give our students coming up an opportunity to have a. to have a brand-new, state-of-the-art Huntington school there on a Huntington site. Because I look at site plan, and that's a whole big part of a plan. And yes, I, I, I have did my, my check. And I have been around the construction. I have built two homes. And I have built from the ground up to the lots. And I got to tell you, once you start building, oh, it'll call skyrocket. It was here, and then here, and then here, and before you know it, I, I be building a house. I'm sixty thousand more dollars than I thought. So I don't want us as a school to be given forty thousand, forty million dollars and say, go build a school. We, we couldn't do that here. So yes, it is time for us to, to move, move this project on and make that twenty-twenty-four year, you know, so we can have our kids there. This is for the students, students. When we make our vote today, for the students and for the Huntington community, so that community center is where everyone gets to go, not just when schools open, but anytime they want to have that Huntington school and, and know about the Huntington. And, and, and our, some of our great folks that went to Huntington could be there in the daytime and actually do history lessons. Huntington, more than just a school. It's a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. All right, Mr. Ely.
Um, quick question. When we did the MOU with the Scott project with the city, did we have any complications with that project? That was the last project we did, is that correct?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
They, and that was before I, before I came to Newport News. So, and Mr. Beverly, if you feel free to, to chime in. We, this operations folks had a terrible time with, with, because the MOU did not, uh, did not give them access to the, the MOU that was agreed upon did not give them access to the site during the development of the site, nor did we have representation on the site in the form of a clerk of the works, which is what I'm used to having during a construction project.
That's correct.
So when they, and there, there was a time, and this is, you know, where, where the, there were some challenges with the build. And when this, when the school division approached the contractor who was hired for the project, they basically told the school division personnel that we do not work for you. We work for the city. They contracted us, and you need to talk to them to share your concern with them. Our MOU does not cause, skips all of that. We, we took all of the issues that, that I saw on the Scott, Scott project and made sure that we had equal footing, we could attend the same meetings, we could walk on the site without having to be escorted or, or allowed on the site as long as we're not, as long as there's safety protocols in place. We have a clerk of the works to represent our best interests during those who knows construction, will know construction, know ar, know architectural work and designs, and can give us heads up on any issues. And we have a process in place for dealing with problems that arise during the project. Um, but also there's board, a good board governance piece in terms of what we're doing to this evening, approving the master plan, approving the design of Huntington, that will, that will allow us to, to ensure that, that, that we have control of our project. What was turned over to the school division took almost a year to work out all the, of the complications with those projects. And Mr. Beverly could expand on all of that, but he'd be, we'd be here all night.
Right.
On the leaking roofs, the flooded floors, the-
But Mr. Parker's exactly, Dr. Parker's exactly right. We, we took that as a learning lesson and have tried to nip those problems in the bud with this MOU. And I'm sure they'll take exception to a few things, but we've got the right to recourse and everything.
And as Mr. Hunter said, that is part of the negotiation of things. Once you, they have to agree to say, to an MOU, but we also have to protect our interests.
By not voting on this plan tonight, how further would that put us in opening up a school? Only reason why I ask that, you know, go back to the Heritage event. As the Huntington kids were coming out, a lot of them said, we want our own school. We don't want to be here anymore. So that keeps playing in the back of my head, it's like, is this going to put us? Because as I, as I make the decision, I got to make the best decision for children. And seeing those kids crying out saying, why we have to be in the high school? It may, I never really played it. I said, oh, they're in the high school, it's fine. It may be good, they may have more role models, they may can work with the older kids and, you know, learn and vice versa. But when I heard those kids crying saying, why do they have to be in a high school? While we can't have our own high school? How long would this prolong? This, how long would that push us back? Or will it push us back?
Not approving the plan would definitely push us back. What that timeline would look like, until we can, everybody can get back together and come up with a cohesive plan that everybody likes, you're just pushing opening date right on back into calendar. I mean, like Dr. Parker said, it could be a year, two years down the road, longer. Definitely would be in twenty-five. It's more than likely twenty-six.
So in worst case, in worst case, when you think about it, the things that are static, it takes, it takes a long time to design a facility with the scales and the scope. Because that's, the contractor's going to design the build, and they're going to say, I'm going by your designs. This is what I'm going to build. So if you don't, if you don't have great designs, you're going to have problems with your building. So they take time with that, and that could take anywhere up to a year to do. The other piece is the actual construction phase. And then there's a demolition, demolition component here. And as we've always said, there's also some risky soil and, and sediment issues on that site. So they're going to have to build pilings, and I think they're going to have some incurred costs that we, by being a part of this project, we wouldn't have to incur if we were to develop in the site, um, that we feel would add to the cost of the project. But, um, with that being said, uh, when you factor in the demolition, any other site development work, and the, and the actual construction of the middle school, which will, right now, is scheduled to be the first thing built on this site. You know, we're pushing it to get a fall twenty, twenty-four opening. Now, I'm saying, not saying we can't open in December, open in January. We've, we've opened schools in the middle of the year. I don't know if Newport News has, but I've opened schools in the middle of the year, um, before. But any decisional delays going back would, would delay the, the opening of the school.
Do you feel that kids that are at Heritage right now, the middle school kids, huh? Is it putting a strain on the current situation that we have one? Or are they fine there?
I, I'll, I'll just speak. Fundamentally, we're going to make sure, we, we promised the board, when, when the decision was made to have us, our Huntington students attend Heritage High School, we would provide the best education possible for our students. The middle school students do fairly in a high school environment. We saw some of the challenges that we, our worst fear play out in, in September, where we have, where you have an issue on the campus and you have to evacuate two schools in a short amount of time, and some of those kids was their youngest, um, twelve years old, so, or younger. Um, so I, I believe it's in the best interest of, of developing middle schools, middle school students to be in a middle school. Um, and the sooner we can get to that level of normalcy for them, um, the better off we will be. And the better off our students will be.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ely. Okay, Ms. Searl's Law, we'll let you be one of our last words here.
Wow, yeah, this is a good conversation to have, it's a tough one. You know, my mind goes back to the vote that we took when we put the students, the middle school students at the high school. That was a tough vote then. Because the exposure for whatever it would be was going to be different than it would be within the walls of a middle school. Fast forward to where we are today and the challenges that even the pandemic have given us. You know, just a recent challenge at, at Heritage. For me, my charge feels like we are supposed to give these students a school. That, that feels like, you know, there's so much out here. There's city council that we have to deal with. There's definitely the historical piece, which is important, that's for the kids. But to get off of the fact that we need to get these students in a school as quickly as we possibly can, that's what weighs on me. Now, what is not lost on me is that you all, and I'm speaking to the Hunn, Huntington alumni, you all are the reason we've gotten to this point. Because you have been so steadfast in making sure that this did not fall off the radar for us, for the city council, for the community. And you've been supportive of the students being at Heritage. So for me to hear your disgruntled is hard. It really is. It's hard to hear that. Because what I, the frustration in that is that your interpretation is, is that you failed to do what you came to do. And I challenge on that, that you, you really came to make sure that our future generation of students had a viable place, a good place, a loving place in the community, as you all had when you were at Huntington High School. I'm optimistic that that's what we can create. And to be able to actually see a date on a PowerPoint that says twenty-twenty-four, that we could perhaps open a school for those kids, that's, that's important. And that's because of you all.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. All right. So getting ready to, uh, I thank the board for the time.
Oh, we've, we've got to.
Okay, Tara, you want to?
Got you.
Go ahead, you want to say something? Go ahead.
Okay. Just first a couple of brief comments. I too would like to see the, the students get into a school as quickly as possible, but not by any means necessary, but as quickly as possible. When we went to put the sign up at Huntington Middle School, it was just a joy to see the people passing by, the community in the cars, and they were blowing the horns and honking, and they were getting very, very excited to see a middle school coming. So the community is very excited about that as well. We, we, we're talking about the city almost like it's a foreign kind of body or like adversary and, and things like that. But the city is the people. The city is the people and the people that they represent, so we need to keep that in mind as well. And then as I look at this plan here, and we talked about, one of the things we talked about was the, a possibly extra cost that may be incurred. Because with the plan as is, you could take Thirty, Thirty-first Street and use it as a bus lane. Had the plan been flushed out a little more with more, even committee participation, not just even other citizens, that would be nice as well. But even if more had been flushed out with even more committee input, one of the things that could have been considered to keep the school on that side is where that parking is now. Half of that lot is already a parking lot. That's, it, it's, it borders the street. So that could have just been an idea that could have been flushed out. If the school remained over here, maybe it wouldn't cost as much because we could use some of things that are already in place. One other thing is, when we were looking at designing Huntington years ago, the Alumni Association inquired about possibly preserving a portion of the school. I think we were dealing with Grimma Parker. And one of the things they said that it could possibly be additional cost. And that was the, one of the reasons that they went with a totally new plan. But we were kind of moving along with a new school being on the same site. So just some things to consider. But I, I just prepared something, so I wouldn't forget my thoughts. I want to read that as well. "As a resident of the Southeast community, I get excited and I look forward to any time I hear about development in our community. As a school board member, I get doubly excited when I hear about the possibility of rebuilding Huntington Middle School. You see, in two thousand and eighteen, I along with so many residents, parents, and Huntington alumni were shocked to hear that the school board had voted to close Huntington Middle School. We simply could not understand why the only zoned middle school for students in the Southeast community was being closed without notice or input from the community. A meeting was not even held for parents of the students attending the school until after the decision was made to, to close the school, until after the decision to close the school had been made. Because of the relentless perseverance of concerned citizens, to include members of the Huntington Alumni Association, for the past three years, the school board and city council were reminded monthly of the need and the promise to rebuild Huntington Middle School. I along with my fellow school board members were pleased to witness the civic engagement. However, when these same citizens asked for a seat at the table, and when they asked for their voices to be heard, their pleas fell on deaf ears. It appears that just as when Huntington Middle School closed, the voices of the community need not be heard. This evening, the board will make a vote to approve the plans for the Southeast Community Resource Area. This development plan is seven blocks and will include a new Huntington Middle School, a recreation center, library, splash pad, tennis courts, multipurpose fields, and community gardens. I drive down Wilcom Avenue, to which is one of the borders of this development, every single day. I see the blight at Huntington, at Huntington Middle School since abandoned and deteriorating. I see the litter collecting, grass uncut to the point where I've even called the superintendent to ask him to please have someone to come and cut the grass. I share this with you because I truly will be celebrating the day that I can drive down Wilcom or Orchid Avenue and see the wonderful aforementioned things. When running for school board, one of my campaign promises was to advocate for the rebuilding of Huntington Middle School. So make no mistake about it, I fully support rebuilding Huntington Middle School. I've heard several people say, this is the only way. The city will approve funding for a school, and the students in the Southeast community can get a twenty-first century school. Although I support collaborating with the city, I beg to differ about the financing. And why dangling a, building a twenty-first century school is to be so coveted for students in the Southeast community? Should they expect any less? Would not the plans for any new school be a twenty-first century school, no matter where or what community it's located in? Isn't every student deserving of this? It appears that everyone is excited about the project, but not the manner in which the recommended plan came to fruition. And the one particular, and the one facet in particular is moving Huntington High School. Pros and cons have been presented, but probably could have been better received if the process was more inclusive, and some of the voices that continued to advocate for the school were just given an opportunity to be heard. From what I can ascertain from my fellow school board members, this project may have enough votes to be approved. Although I am in full support of rebuilding Huntington Middle School, and I'm actually looking forward to the day that we can vote on the design phase, which the school board must approve as well. On principle, I cannot in good conscience support this plan as it is."
Thank you, Dr. Best. And so now we are going to, going to get, ready to call for the vote and, uh, so that, and I appreciate the board's time and energy that has been put into the discussion tonight. I think it reflects well upon the board that, that we do care very passionately about this, this topic and this subject. And I know that we have all worked very hard to try to make sure that we have a Huntington Middle School. And I'll just say, from my own thoughts and recollections, you know, starting back in twenty-eighteen and, and thinking to now, uh, it'll be twenty-twenty-four, that's two generations of students, of middle school students that have, that will have been without a school, even by as early as twenty-twenty-four. And that's really, you know, for, for me and to my, to the promise that I made, that's too long. I certainly, you know, my own feelings are frustrated and, and upset that it's taken as long as it has. But my feelings are not important. What is important are the kids, the six hundred students and the families that have been identified that need a school in that area. And I personally want to make sure that there are no excuses as to getting that done as quickly as possible. And we knew that when we put students at Heritage, that that was a temporary solution. And it, it is, does incur costs every year that goes by where, um, where we, where we have more students who are matriculating through Heritage, through Huntington. And that, so that was always a temporary solution, and it does cost us money operation-wise to, to, to delay. So for those, those are, those are some of the, the things that are factoring into my decision tonight, um, that, uh, the promise to the students and, and to their benefit, that they need a school. We know they need a school. We had a feasibility study that showed they need a school. And so, uh, we don't, I, I, I would say that I don't want anything to delay them getting a school because, because they need it. All right. So with that, Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Let me confirm, I have Mrs. Searl's Law with the motion, and Mr. Ely second. Yes.
I know.
Who's second?
Mr. Harris.
Uh, I believe it was-
Gary.
It was Mr. Hunter.
Mr. Hunter.
Ms. Ammon?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Against.
Mr. Ely?
Against.
Mr. Harris?
Against.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Mrs. Searl's Law?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Motion carries four-three.
Yes. So we we are gonna um modify our agenda. Board members, you have the monthly school update uh in your packet. Uh, and uh so are there any questions uh about the monthly school update? All right, there being none, then we're gonna move on to five point oh two, where board members also have that update in your packet. Uh, we know that hold harmless is an is an important uh consideration for the board at this time. That's something we're advocating for. And I also highlight uh congratulations to our Madam Vice Chair for getting our legislative priority approved by the uh delegate assembly. So congratulations on that excellent work. And we look forward to having the opportunity hopefully to testify in front of the General Assembly uh about getting funding for school construction, which is something we've just been talking about. So Madam Vice Chair, thank you for that work. And so uh board members, there was no questions. Then we'll move on to uh item five point oh three, which is our assessment update.
Thank you, Mr. Board Chairman. Um, the course proposal five point zero two, I think, would probably be a um a choice that would have to go through tonight for board consideration um next month. Um, and I think Dr. Jones is here to provide that overview um that and then we'll move on. We can move on to the assessment update at that time.
All right, thank you.
And those will be the two. Thank you, Dr. Jones.
All right. Good evening, Chair Brown. Vice Chair Searle's Law, school board members, and Dr. Parker. Tonight, I will share new course proposals and revisions for your review for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Each year, the Curriculum and Development Committee provides a timeline and application process for new course proposals to principals and supervisors to enhance the academic program for students in Newport News. We began the process um on October the second. Proposals were due on October the twenty-first and a committee listened to presentations on October the twenty-sixth. The committee members included Dr. Blow, Director of Secondary School Leadership, Dr. Karen Blizzard, Director of School Counseling, Kathy Di Marino, Coordinator of Secondary School Leadership, and me, Dr. Joanne Jones. Proposals were submitted by Tonette Outlaw and Dr. Aaron Smith from the Aviation Magnet, Jennifer Saunders and Mary Parrish from Woodside High School, Jennifer Jessica Mitchell, Social Studies, and Katie Sheen Smith and Andrew Watson, representing Visual and Performing Arts. So tonight, we're here on November sixteenth to share the proposals with you. Upon school board approval, all schools will have access to approved courses unless it is a designated magnet-specific course offering. Tonight, I will share one new course proposal and four revisions. The new course proposal would be unmanned aircraft systems. The revisions will include B C calculus, World History Two honors, media arts, and stagecraft two. And I just wanted to say that a couple of members from the committee are here tonight. Um, Dr. Blow, Mary Parrish, and Dr. Smith, thank you for being present and being supportive. I want to start with unmanned aircraft systems. Unmanned aircraft systems prepare students to fly drones under the Federal Aviation Administrators Guidelines. Students receive an overview of the National Air Space System, F F FAA regulations, and the design and operation of small drones. Students monitor weather, addressing loading and performance of drones, and coordinate flight operation logistics. They perform administrative tasks, train to fly, and finally, fly small unmanned aircraft systems, or what we call drones. According to the U A S Workforce Needs Survey, the global market is really moving towards um unmanned aircraft systems, delivery of parcels, photo imagery, military security, academic research using GPS, satellite geotagging, and mapping. So there is definitely a need for this skill set. Unmanned aircraft systems provides a variety of learning and career opportunities for our students. Students will monitor weather and atmospheric changes, address loading and unloading tasks, coordinate flight operation logistics, and train to fly and operate small unmanned aircraft systems. Career opportunities include military intelligence specialists, aerospace engineer pilots, flight engineers, telecommunications specialists, G I S, which is Geographic Information Systems tech technicians, environmental managers, and atmospheric scientists. The course sequence for unmanned aircraft system currently, um, we want to expand the course sequence. The current sequence um includes several double block double-blocked, single semester courses, which limit student schedule options due to requirements for certifications. The current pathway focuses more on maintenance logistics and aircraft operations. While the proposed course completes a pathway that is connected to twenty-first century technologies, engineering, and national security operations. Additional information about the course would be that it is definitely um at Denby Aviation Academy, and it is a magnet specialty course for students at Denby Aviation Academy. Prerequisites for the course include completion of Aerospace Technology One, Aircraft Pilot One and Two. It is a year-long course, which provides opportunities for students to have flexibility with their schedules. And students will um have an opportunity to receive an industry certification um for this course. There are minimal costs associated with this for textbooks and for drones, some of which the um program already has, and Perkins will support any additional funding for the program. That is the only new course proposal I have. The following would be um proposed course revisions. I am gonna start with B C calculus. Currently, A B calculus Part One and B C calculus Part Two are advanced math courses offered as double-block courses during the same school year. The proposed course revision would include to offer A B Part One and B C calculus Part Two over a two-year period. This would promote deeper learning over a two-year period to prepare students for college-level courses as well as for the A P exam. It would also provide flexibility in student schedules for magnet and elective courses. Although this was proposed by Woodside High School, it would be available for all students in Newport News. When we think about the course proposal or the course sequence for B C calculus, um, as you can see, it currently um has A B and B C calculus as double-block courses um that can be taken during the eleventh and twelfth grade year. The proposed revision separates the two courses as a single-block, year-long course. This will promote deeper learning of mathematical concepts and principles to better prepare students for college-level math. A B and B C will continue to be offered. However, we are adding the revision to give students options based upon their mathematical goals as well as open up their schedule to take other courses. World History Two. World History One, history up into the fifteen hundreds, and World History Two honors, the fifteen hundred to the present, are currently paired together and compacted during a one-year period. The proposed course revision would allow students to enroll in World History Two honors without having to take World History One as a prerequisite. Students will have more flexibility to select other history courses, and it is also aligned with surrounding districts as well as the recommendation by the College Board A P curriculum. When we consider the course sequence for World History, as you can see, World History One and Two honors was paired together during a one-year period. We are proposing um the opportunity for students to have options their ninth-grade year to take either World History One, World Geography, or A P Human Geography. Students can be successful in World History Two without taking World History One. In addition, the course revision of World History Two honors would maximize opportunities for deeper learning and engage in performance-based assessments that promote the application of learn. Media arts. Media arts, um, the current course is an interactive and video, I'm sorry, excuse me. Media arts is an interactive design and video media are offered as two separate semester courses. The current curriculum does not reflect the innovative practices for op options in modern media and them careers. The proposed revision would combine and retitle both courses as media arts. So we're taking the two courses, interactive design and video media, and renaming them as media arts as a year-long course. We also want to revise the curriculum to include trending and digital visual arts, such as game design, animation, point of view, storytelling, and personal um expression. When we look at the course sequence for media arts, um, video media and interactive design are currently offered during the twelfth-grade year as semester-based courses. The proposed course will enable students to take media arts their junior year as a year-long course, exposing them to modern and innovative technologies for advanced learning that will direct their pathway completer during their senior year. Type of, oh, there it is. So when students take the course as um an eleventh grader, it will open up additional pathways for them their senior year. Sorry about that. And finally, stagecraft two. Stagecraft two advances the learning in stagecraft one by allowing students to choose the specialized track of theater for onstage acting or backstage stagecraft. The proposed course revision will accurately reflect the progression of technical theater and hands-on design creation. Learning opportunities will include set building, use of small power tools, technological equipment for advanced lighting, sound, and special effects. As we review the course sequence for stagecraft two. We see that during the eleventh and twelfth grade year, the course offerings expand to include um stagecraft two. Most importantly, it is offered as a year-long course, and it will not be a semester-based course. When students, when classes are double-blocked as semester courses, it limits opportunities for students, which is kind of a running theme of all of the revisions that I've proposed to you tonight, tonight. So just as a review, um, new course, unmanned aircraft systems and revisions for B C calculus, World History Two honors, media arts, and stagecraft two. Do you have any questions?
Yes, Mr. Ely.
So excited you got stagecraft in there. I think that gives our children the opportunity to compete with jobs in L.A., New York, a lot, a lot of your larger cities. You give our kids that early high school experience. Question, will we be, would it, would that cause, would they be able to take those courses over the summertime or part of the the Summer Institute of the Arts? Could it be a program while they're they're preparing productions during the summertime? The stage craft team able to take that a part of the arts in the summertime, being they go side by side?
I think that's something that we can definitely investigate as a part of the Summer Institute for the arts. I know that there is more performing and learning about music at that time, but I don't see why we couldn't consider that.
Because I know at Hampton University, they have the theater, but they also have, everybody's not, the arts have so many different components. And I know some kids are more technical versus um performing.
Right.
And there to there, you need that whole piece to make the show go. Without your your light techs and your stagecraft, there is no show. So maybe those kids can maybe take part.
Along.
In the summertime as well as all your, just the idea.
Okay. All right. I'm writing it down right here.
This is exciting, man.
Other questions?
Okay, other questions? Yes, Ms. Searle's Law.
So I got excited about the um equally as excited about breaking up the um calculus A B and B C and taking it out of a double block. Whoever's idea that was um was uh nice and right on time. I like that um the students will have a longer time to absorb the information. I know that we tend to have students who will take uh A B and B C and either not take the A P exam or not perform well on it. And this would encourage them to be able um to do that. I think one of the ones I'm, I'd like to get a little more information about, um, so the A P Human Geography class really is designed as a student's first A P course. So your very, very highly-able teachers who are teaching that are sensitive to the fact that this is the first A P course that students are taking i- in most schools. When we're talking about World History being a possibility, um, ninth-grade offering for A P or one of the other histories, how will we make that transition to make those courses equally introductory, if you will, into the A P format for students?
So you were speaking about A P Human Geography, and your question again was?
So if you pull this options up um for the proposed, if I'm not mistaken, it meant that they could take something other than, they could take either World Geography or World History.
Yes.
Um, those are not A P courses? Those are just your general?
Uh, actually, World Geography is average and honors.
Okay.
And then the A P Human Geography is for students who are definitely looking to take an advanced class.
So technically, the only thing then we're adding to ninth grade would be the opportunity to take World History um in ninth grade. Okay.
Yes. Well, the main thing that of the revision is that we're not compacting World History One and Two honors in one school year. We're opening it up to provide World History as a year-long course.
Okay.
To provide deeper learning.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah. That's the, that's the big revision there. Is before, if you look above, they were taking both World History One and Two um within the same year, and it was just really a lot of information to learn at one time.
Okay.
Ms. Aiman?
I will echo Mrs. Searle's Law's comments. I'm very excited to see A B and B C broken up. I remember have, we didn't have it combined, I don't think, back in the olden days. We went straight to B C calculus, and that was, let's just say, not many people took the A P test because you could pass the class, but it was a whole different level of learning. So I'm very excited to see that. Uh, and also for breaking up the World History. I think the more deeper history we can offer our kids, that's, that's excellent. Uh, I had a quick question on the Aviation Academy course. It looks like we're, are we pulling away? Are we not going to offer air traffic control and airport operations? Or are they going to be combined into the ninth-grade course?
I am gonna let Dr. Smith come up and help with that question because he's the expert. And I tell you, I learned so much during this new um course proposal process this time. I mean, I, I'm like you all, I was very excited about the changes. So I'll just.
Good evening. The air airspace tech design course basically does an introduction of airport ops. It does a little bit of drones and does piloting. Does a lot of things within one capacity. So allows kids to still get that career exposure, but more importantly, it sets students up for the U A V course, which is really what the industry really is calling for this day.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So I believe that takes it. So I believe that takes us now to item five. Thank you, Dr. Jones.
Thank you.
5.05. The attendance report, 5.06, the membership report, 5.07, construction report. Board members, you've received copies of these reports in your packets. Are there any questions on those? All right, there being none, then we now move on to items, comments by the superintendent, 5.08.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, short remarks, but I think the board will be happy to hear about some of the good things we're gonna mention tonight. I'll begin this evening by recognizing the first LEGO League Robotics Team. And I think one of our board members attended, attended that event, one or two, who competed in a regional qualifying tournament on Saturday, November 6th, at Credenton Middle School. Teams representing Deer Park, General Stanford, Knollwood Metals, Catherine Johnson, Passage, and Boogertee, Washington competed with public and private school teams across the region with much success. Deer Park earned the Robotic Design Award. Knollwood Metals earned the Innovation Project Award. And Catherine Johnson and Passage earned the Core Values Award. And for the first time in four years, we have a team who qualified for the state semifinals. Congratulations to Knoll, to the Knollwood Metals Psycho Cat Hamster Burrito Team. I just like saying that. I like that. Our LEGO team, teams were challenged to program a robot score points on a playing field and develop a solution to a problem they identified. And special thanks to our STEM leadership team and our partners for this great event. Thank you to the Black Child Development Institute of Hampton Roads for their generous donation to our Early Childhood Centers. During a special check presentation on November 11th, the institute generously awarded Denby, Marshall, and Watkins Early Childhood Centers $1,000 to support student literacy. Our two preschool classrooms at General Stanford Elementary earned $300. In addition, each preschool student in our school division will receive books of their own thanks to this organization. We extend an appreciation to the president of the Black Child Development Institute of Hampton Roads, Ms. Darlene Walker, and Secretary Samuel Jones for their generous contributions. And we thank, thank you for supporting our students. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll just close out by saying next week, we do have some wellness days scheduled for staff and students, and we, we have already determined that we will provide compensation for those employees who are hourly workers who will lose, lose pay for those two days. That is already. That being said, we hope everyone has a great holiday. We don't want anyone stressing over their, their check on a wellness day. So I guess it was counterproductive. So with that being said, Happy Thanksgiving to all. We wish, wish everyone the best. And Human Resources will be sending out information regarding the specifics of that this week.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. Now we all move on to item six, which is our second opportunity to hear from the public. Madam Clerk, are there any cards? There being no cards, then we stand adjourned.